Probably five now.
Yes, alright.
It's five o'clock and we're up and going, so I'd like to call to order this this called meeting of the Edgefield County Council on September the 18th, 2024. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. We'll start with the invocation that'll be led by our administrator, David Cadell, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for bringing us here safely tonight. Lord, as we consider the issues before the county, we would ask you to give us guidance, to ask good questions. We would ask you to give us wisdom and discernment. We would ask you to give us the ability to make good decisions going forward that would benefit all residents of Edgefield County. And Lord, we pray these things in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Alright, so that everybody's on the same page. The reason we have this called meeting tonight is that I wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page going forward on this revision every five year, if you will. This is the, every 10 years you do a major revision. Every five years you do sort of an update. And before we go through it, just for everybody's understanding, we had this meeting because, a couple of reasons. One, I think it's important for county council to get acclimated to this again. It's been five years since we had to deal with it. And there was a lot of talk and a lot of back and forth on a lot of long meetings. So I want to make sure we all start off on the right foot, that we get the right information, both out to the public and to ourselves. Because this process is not a long process. And as Doc Clark will tell us in a few minutes, this is a relatively short process. This five-year part, you, we will, all we will do is a public hearing and a resolution. One vote. So that's all that's involved in this. This isn't a three reading, 10-month process or anything. So we want to give the public a chance to hear this. So if I did not have this meeting, it'd be even less time for people to comment. So this meeting gives people more of a chance to look at what's online and what will be online, if it's not there right now, to look at these revisions and give us any comments they have. And certainly council, we can make any changes before we take that vote in a, in a couple of months. So with that, are there any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, one more, one more thing. This is a workshop, just like the budget workshop. There'll be no votes tonight. No motions will be made, no votes will be taken. This is just an understanding. It's more informal, we can ask as many questions as we'd like, stay here as long as we like, as long as we all have a good understanding coming out of this meeting about what this is. So with that, are there any questions from council on the process tonight? Are we good? Alright, so with that, I think we're going, Doc's gonna take, do all this. So Doc, I'm gonna turn it over to you. I think you've got a PowerPoint presentation to walk through.
Okay, so first off, it is posted on the internet already. So it's directly on the homepage, it's the second post. So anybody that wants to see the material can go to the website, it's already there. This, like you said, is just a five-year review. This is not the 10-year major update where we basically have to rewrite the comp plan. This presentation is split up into two different sections. The first part of it is basically just going over what the comp plan is, what the law requires, so forth and so on. And then the second part is the actual changes that are being recommended. So what is the comp plan? The comp plan is a recommendatory document providing guidance and is often written abstractly so that elected officials can utilize it in a variety of ways to implement it. It shows you the existing conditions in the county and then a statement of needs and goals for implementation. Basically, what that means is it's a bird's eye view of your county. It shows what's here and where you want it to go. That, that's all the comp plan is. There are 10 elements to the comp plan now. Y'all are used to nine, but in 2020, they've added a 10th one. In 2029, when we do our major update, we will have to include the new section. I'll go through each of them just so that y'all have a good understanding of what they all are. The population element is what you'd expect. It's basically a census of the county. It considers historical population trends, anticipated growth, as well as demographic specifics, size, number of households, education, income, et cetera. Then the second element is your economic development. And this addresses the characteristics available to your workforce. So how your workers live, where they work, what your unemployment rates are, tourism, manufacturing, those sorts of things. Three, your natural resources element. This is your water bodies, parks, recreation areas, ag land, forests, wildlife, flood plains, all of those sorts of information, just basically the land in your county. Then you have cultural resources. These are your historic sites, buildings, unique things to your area like Sarah's Farm Adventure will be in the next plan. Those sorts of things. Community facilities. So this is your water, sewer infrastructure, streets, wastewater, fire protection, EMS, all of your government facilities, basically. Your housing element, and this is one of the elements that's required in order for y'all to legally have a land development ordinance. So without this section and chapter seven, you're not legally capable of having ordinances that control land use. So this is one of the mandatory sections. Locations, types, ages, conditions of existing houses, owner occupied, renter occupied, those sorts of things. Land use element, and this is where the planning commission obviously spends the large majority of their time. This is your land use, zoning, industrial agriculture. All of those things are broken down and put on an existing map and a future map. Your existing map is basically your zoning map, which is actually a legal document. What you have in here is called a future land use map, which is not a legal document, but it is a guiding document. Section eight is your transportation. So this is your road construction, pedestrian, bikeways, all those sorts of things. So like the rail trail plans, things like that. That goes in your transportation element. Priority investment plan, this is the big one for county council. So this is sort of a, here's the goals that we want to fund going forward, the next five years, or the next 10 years, if you choose not to update it in the five year. And then the new element, which just got added in 2020, is the resiliency element, which includes impacts for flooding, water, natural hazards, individual communities, institutions, business, economic development, public infrastructure, facilities, public health, safety, welfare. And it sounds more complicated than it is. What it really is, is you have to put into words something that we already do. So if a development comes along and you think it's going to impact another jurisdiction, let's say something in Merryweather's coming along and we think it's going to dump water into North Augusta, we have to have a written plan on how we're communicating that with North Augusta to give them the opportunity to come speak on the development. That's what, that's basically what that is. Obviously, we already have a great working relationship with all of our neighbors and we already do that. But this just formalizes it and makes it part of the plan. And we will have to add that in 2029. So what does the law say? So basically, the law does not require county to have planning. You don't have to have land use regulations, you don't have to have zoning. But if you want those things, then you have to have a planning commission and you have to have a comp plan. The comp plan is the primary job of the planning commission. There's no purpose to have a planning commission if you don't have a comp plan. It's the overarching document that guides your legislative powers when it comes to land use. So every five years, you have to do a review. That's what we're doing right now. The review is a simple process. You go through and you update things you've already done. You change language. You can add and subtract things. In this review, only two things are really being changed. All the rest of it is just updating language, changing charts, that sort of thing. At 10-year, you basically have to rewrite all 10 elements. And then it has to have ordinance and three readings and be completely read adopted. So it's basically a new plan. We won't hit that until 2029. So we're in our five-year plan. So again, we're in our five-year. This update is only gonna require you to do a public hearing and a simple resolution. You can put the public hearing out and have one meeting and vote on it right after the public hearing, or you can space it out and have an introductory meeting, a public hearing meeting, and then a vote meeting. Y'all can organize that however you want to. We'll get with David and we'll set up a schedule. We are not, we have started on the process, so there's no requirement in the law that we have to get this done in a certain specific amount of time. So all it says in the law is that you start in your five-year. So we started. We're good legally. It's not a legislative document, there's no rules or penalties involved with it. So you can, if you decide there's a lot of things you want to change, you can take as much time as you want to. So what have we recommended to be changed? Of course, staff has gone in there and we updated some charts from the Census Bureau. We changed some of the language because we received complaints that, you know, it's hard to understand, that sort of thing. So we did some just generic updates, which planning commission has seen and voted on. Then the planning commission, they of course focused on the land use element. They have, most of it is just updates again. As y'all know, a few years ago, we, we got rid of general development and we created general residential and general commercial zoning districts. Well, we've updated that, we've put that language in. The two things that the planning commission has recommended to be added is some additional overlay expansion and the creation of a rural agriculture zoning district. And then the priority investment plan, all I did was go through and basically scratch out the things that we have done or changed the dates on them. Basically, just a general update. There are a few items that I highlighted that y'all are just gonna have to figure out for me because I don't really have a, any guidance there. You can add to it though, if you want to. So if you want to add elements to it, you can. You are not required to in the review. So if you want to wait until the 10-year update to completely redo it, you can. But if you want to add to it, you can do so now. So this is the second part of the presentation. I'm gonna go through each change individually so that you'll know exactly what changed in there. This first page, on page 92, it should be one of your first tabs. Yes, your second tab.
Which is 6.4.
All this is, is your, your housing numbers and values. Changed it from the 2010 to the 2020 census. I can tell you, the numbers are still not accurate. They didn't take into consideration any of the inflation or inflationary effects that we've experienced in the last couple of years. COVID was strong during the 2020 census and there were no boots on the ground, as it were. So it is however, more accurate on this specific chart than the others. So I did decide to go ahead and update this one with the new numbers. Your next one is on page 112, which should be your third tab.
For us, that's 7.2.
Yeah, Doc, you're, you've got, you've got page numbers that we don't have. So when we
I got 7.2.
Can we get y'all's page numbers?
Here, you can see it's mine.
Okay. There is it.
It'd be 7.3.
Yes, I have it.
7.2.
7.10? Okay, that's alright.
Alright, 7.2. Yep, there it is, right there in that.
Well, this is 7.10.
7.10 and 7.11.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. How did we end up with different numbers that are not?
Well, because I use a computer version, which labels them by number and that's labeling them by chapter.
Okay.
So it's giving you a page number for each chapter. And my copy, of course, just gives me a generic page number for every page. So anyway, this, we didn't actually change any of the data on this list. The word density and the way they were worded in here was confusing to people. We got a lot of complaints on it, so I just removed it. They mean the same thing. It's just instead of suburban density, it says suburban residential. Just makes it easier for people to read. And then, you know, mixed use, nobody really understood what that meant. So community mixed activity is what we changed it to. So it's, it's very simple, it's just a language change. It has no effect on the actual data. On the very next page, the colorful chart, I made it match the previous chart. All I did was I went in and I changed the land use categories to match back and forth. Now, they did make some minor changes up here where they took small lot residential out of rural and estate. But that's it. Nothing, nothing else on that table is changed. Your next page. It should still follow your tabs.
7.14.
So this is where they created rural agriculture. This district is a two-acre minimum lot-sized district. Y'all have not seen the district yet. It has not come to you, it is not created, this will not create it. This only makes it legal for you to create it if you choose to do so. The RA district basically is commercial, is, it's got to be small scale, it's got to be rural in nature, no industrial at all, no manufacturing at all. All the agriculture and all the residential, except for multifamily, is allowed. That's what RA is. And it has a two-acre lot size requirement. So that is what the RA district as proposed is. Y'all obviously will be able to change that whenever it comes to you. So you will be able to review, just like any other zoning district, you'll have a use table, you'll have a lot table, and you'll have a description. And you can change it how you will. The only thing in here is that description line, that's it.
Do you know when it might come to us?
So this has to be done first.
Right.
So as soon as this is done, all of their land development changes will follow. So the planning commission has already voted on the actual land development changes themselves, but I'm not gonna bring them to you until this is, this update's completed.
Okay.
Then general development, as I said, y'all removed general development already. We split it into two different zoning districts. All we're doing is updating this to reflect that. And that's it. So we, we deleted the language for GD and then we added the language for GR and GC. That's, that's the whole change. On the next one.
7.16.
Should be the next page, 7.16. This is the highway overlay district. We have not made or recommended any changes to the overlay district in terms of its legislative authority. It's still a commercial district. It does not have any effect on residential, it does not have any effect on agriculture. It only applies to commercial. The only thing they've recommended doing is expanding where those overlays are. So on five-notch, instead of stopping at Murray Road Extension, it just goes down to Sweetwater Road. So basically, right now, it's just kind of cut off at Murray Road Extension and then it's just blank back down to Sweetwater. This just completes the triangle, basically. Sweetwater Road intersection, they extended it. Right now, it stops at the end of the gas tanks. They just extended it to the first actual road, so it goes up to Big Oak. Has no real effect, just makes it easier to track where, where it stops. The big one, US 25 South from Aiken County line all the way to the limits of the town of Edgefield. Right now, it stops at Greenhouse Road. And there's nothing between Greenhouse Road and the city of Edgefield. This will extend that commercial overlay from Greenhouse Road all the way to the town limits of Edgefield. The primary thing for this overlay and the primary reason planning commission is recommending the change is billboards and signage controls. So none of our zoning districts have any architectural controls in them whatsoever. What this does is limit what kind of signs and billboards can go up. And that's pretty much it. It's a, it's a big sign ordinance and then it has some landscaping requirements for commercial businesses. So if you want to put in a commercial business, you gotta landscape your entryway, that sort of thing. It does not have any effect whatsoever on residential property or agricultural property. The intersection of Briggs Road, Martin Town Road, West Martin Town Road and Woodlawn. So that's, that is the intersection itself where Sportsman's Corner is. It doesn't go up and down those roads, it's just that intersection itself, by itself. And then US Highway 121 from Trenton to Johnston. So that's a big expanse of nothing. It's all ag land, pretty much. I think there's one industry there. The main thing there again is billboards. Want to limit billboards. We don't want somebody to come in and put a 700 square foot billboard up. So extending that. We deleted the language, the existing language for the Sweetwater Road overlay because we decided not to do a residential overlay. It never got implemented, so we just changed it to basically match our existing overlay so that it would, it would match the existing conditions. It's basically an update. Martin Town Road overlay, we just deleted the last line, which had architectural controls in it, like you can only have wood fences. You can't have certain things, mailboxes, characteristics, those sorts of things. We just deleted that last sentence because we never implemented it. So there's no reason to leave it in there, we're not gonna do it. And then the growth areas for the town of Edgefield and Johnston, we never implemented those. It was decided that they were not needed to be an overlay. There's no benefit to it because it really won't incentivize the areas in any way. Zoning was decided to be a much more effective means of doing that, which we changed already. So we're just cleaning that up and removing those. Alright. After that one, we go all the way to your very last one and I will go through this entire paper. This is, this is your priority investment plan and this is the biggest part for county councils because this is actually expending public funds at some point. This is, well, plans to expend public funds. Most of these changes, I just updated like this first page, I just changed the dates. It's an ongoing thing, we're always updating zoning, we're always updating comp plans. It's literally required by law for us to go through this process every five years. So I just changed the dates. On the next page, we have branding and we have gateway signage. Well, we did that. It's done, it's completed. There's no reason to leave it, I just removed it. Managed economic development to recruit. We did have a deadline on there and I don't know why. That was some language that didn't make sense to me. We're always working in economic development, that is an ongoing process that never ends. So I saw no reason to put a date on it. And then also, for some reason, as it relates to economic development for water and sewer, we put that all on Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority alone, which that's not necessarily always the case. Sometimes the county might have to get involved. So I just added county to it, to reflect that county interests and water and sewer interests sometimes line up and we might have to work together.
Doc, on that page, I think this is just a housekeeping. The last item mentions Fort Gordon, of course, it's now Fort Eisenhower. So we just need to change that name.
Sorry, I'm practically blind sometimes. I'll, I'll change that. Zoning ordinance, educational programs, mixed residential office, commercial employment by developers where appropriate. Again, updates to any kind of programs that we have, it changes with the time. It's a constant, planning never stops, it's, it's always going. So there's no real reason to stick end dates on that. Your next page, update zoning to restrict densities on environmentally sensitive lands.
Doc, hang on a second, I'm trying to find where you are versus where I am. That's that one? Okay, I'm probably the end, okay, thank you.
So we, we did that, so I just removed it. That was a particular issue that we had back then, at that time, in 2019. And when we redid the land development ordinance after the last comp plan update, we took care of those things. So I just removed it. Inventory scenic resources and identify for decision makers. I just updated that. That changes, again, as you know, like Sarah's Farm Adventure, which is opening tomorrow. Things get built, scenic scenes change, things change. So I just updated the year and we'll do the same next year. I could also change it to ongoing so that it just stays that way. But any time we have something new or shiny in the county, y'all should know. And that's basically all it says. Expand zoning categories to allow smaller lot development with conservation buffers where appropriate. And I won't say that that was a bad idea because it is a good idea, but the will of the people seems to be larger lot and they aren't real excited about conservation subdivisions or allowing smaller lot anywhere in the county. I will say that fair housing does require us to meet fair housing goals, affordable housing goals. We do have to allow every type of construction in the county somewhere, which we do currently. But I don't believe there's any will to create a specific district or a specific type of subdivision for conservation. If the planning commission decides to move in that direction again in the future or y'all choose that they, they should, then we can add it back. But right now, there's, I, I don't see any desire to make a conservation subdivision ordinance. So I simply removed it. Prepare county recreation plans to support a range of parks, cultural resources and coordinate those plans with town resources. Again, I just put ongoing. As you know, we've done a lot with recreation lately. Recreation has grown immensely, there's been a lot of resources poured into it. But this is not something that has an end date either. Recreation is something that we're always going to have to address and as our county changes, our needs change. So again, I just put ongoing. The next one, I highlighted that blue because I have no idea what to do with that. Do we have a nonprofit for recreation? And if we don't, do you want one? Because it's never been brought to me. And the other thing is, you'll notice that they wanted to start it in 2020 and have us complete it in 2019, which I thought was a little bit funny. So I highlighted this blue because I don't know what you want me to do with it. Do you want me to delete it or do you want me to clean it up and actually find out what you need to do to have a nonprofit for that?
Do you remember where, from what that was born?
Yeah, the, so the genesis of this one, it was when Roger was here. And at that time, of course, we only had Nick as our recreation director. And the discussion from the planning commission and then subsequently council was that, alright, was that, alright, recreation never seems to have enough money. What if we created a five-oh-one C-three to help go out and raise money? You know, go to an industry and say, would you buy one of these billboards for the hang-on-a-fence? And those kind of things, to raise extra money. That was one of the things that, that, it may have been others, but that one stands out to me. Um, and so that was one of the, the main things, but there are other things, I guess, was involved too. But if we hadn't done any of it, and I think our new recreation person that we hired is doing some of that anyway, am I right?
That is correct, that's part of his job description, and he's been very successful in the three months he's been employed here.
And, I could be wrong, so you can correct me, but we won't have to pay ta- I mean, we're a government, so any donations we receive on that doesn't need to go through a nonprofit anyway.
That is correct, we've long had a, a revenue line in our budget, and that money's dedicated strictly to recreation, and we've been very good about just spending it on recreation.
So we can act as a nonprofit. We don't have to open up a separate, or establish a separate one, I guess is what I'm saying.
And I think, yeah, you're right, it was when we thought we weren't going to be able to add any back, or it didn't look like we were adding a second for a while, and now that we have, I think this probably negates the need.
Unless somebody on council feels strongly, I'm assuming that probably could be deleted.
Yeah, okay, I'll just change that to scratch that out later. Identify, develop new recreation facilities in the Merriweather area. I just updated that to twenty-twenty-nine. The park we're actually actively building right now down there will be done by twenty-twenty-nine. If y'all want to add a second one, just to keep that going, we can. Um, I can change that to ongoing. Again, it's recreation, so at some point in the future, additional facilities will be added, things will be changed. But I, if I remember correctly, that one was specifically added to put a park in the Merriweather area, which is currently happening. So, I just updated it to twenty-twenty-nine. Construct new recreation facilities, same thing as the one above. We identified a site and we are constructing it. It's not done right this minute, so I just updated it to twenty-twenty-nine. Moving on to the next section. Identify, develop recreation activities and buildings in the Johnston, Edgefield, Trenton area, ongoing. Of course, we have Scout Park, that's, we took the old Boy Scout building, we've completely renovated. They're doing classes in it, uh, I think yoga is one of them that they're doing right now in there. We also had a summer camp in there that was fun, they painted a mural on the side of the building. So we have that new, we have that facility, I shouldn't say new, but it's basically new.
In a little park there, on the playground.
We put a playground, we put a shelter. So, that, that, and that's getting signage soon, it's basically done, except for the signage. But again, we're partnered with the towns on recreation, so we're always doing things in terms of recreation.
Can I, can I stop you right there?
Okay.
So on both of those, uh, on the top of the page, those first two, um, this is a minor thing, but both of those say ongoing, but the language is similar to the page before that had Merriweather and have a specific date. For consistency, shouldn't we just say ongoing for the Merriweather ones too?
We can. The, the only reason I did it that way on the Merriweather one is because I think in the twenty-nineteen update, it was specifically stated that we need to have a recreation facility built down there. And that, that was a specific goal, whereas I think the Edgefield, Johnston, Trenton ones were already there. And, well, we're already in a partnership with them. Support Greenway corridor, I moved that to twenty-twenty-nine. I have had conversations with David regarding a Greenway or a rail trail extension. Um, we've also talked to the town about helping expand their rail trail. So there, there are conversations going on regarding, uh, walking tracks. But we have not actually invested any funds into it yet, so right now, it's still in the planning phase, so I just changed the date. Identify resources to fund additional fire and police personnel. The reason I highlighted this blue is, this is always going to be a need. There's never enough firemen, policemen, and I also think we need to add EMS to that. EMS is a, is a serious need for the county right now, as y'all have spoken about at previous meetings. So we need to update that language to include EMS and, uh, you know, update the dates on it. That would be my recommendation, but y'all can change it completely if you want to, because we did actually address some of those things. So you can switch it over and put your newer concern of EMS in there. But like I said, police and fire needs are never going to go away. So I think the easier thing, and what I would recommend, is just say, police, fire, and EMS, and then change the dates, if y'all are okay with that.
Would you just put ongoing?
I can put ongoing, yes.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to just say ongoing.
At the next one, we'll change it from, to twenty-twenty-nine and ongoing. Expand broadband. Well, that's been on your table for a while. And that is a painful fight for us because we actually don't have any say in any of it. We get to write a recommendation letter, and that's pretty much all the state lets us do, which we have done multiple times for multiple different entities. Obviously, Carolina Connect has expanded hugely throughout the county. But there are still some areas that are problematic. And we have put in our letters of support to get that fixed. But again, we have no direct control over the funds, and we have no direct control over how they're spent, and we have no direct control over companies that seek it. So, you know, AT&amp;T, they can ignore it, they don't have to take that money and expand anything. So it's one of those things that, yeah, we, we want to help them, and we want to push them, but ultimately, it's, it's not up to us, we don't control any aspect of that. But it is an issue, and it is ongoing, so I just changed it to ongoing.
Now, one thing I would say on those two, the one that starts review AT&amp;T and the second says expand broadband, both those lines all the way across just talk about AT&amp;T, but now we have Carolina Connect, and we have other companies now that are doing it by virtue of the grant money and all that. I would suggest that we don't mention any company and just say companies that do that kind of work or something, as, as it fits the language across, and not just point out AT&amp;T.
Alright, I'll change that. Alright, uh, update zoning ordinance and development regulations to support housing developments where appropriate. We took care of that in twenty-twenty. We, we did a major update to the comp plan in twenty-nineteen, and we did a major update to the land development ordinance in twenty-twenty. So that is, is done, and we'll probably do it again in twenty-twenty-nine. So, buckle up. Identify programs to provide housing choices to keep aging residents in the community. We do not have enough senior care in Edgefield County, I'm pretty sure everyone here is very well aware of that. So, again, I pushed that to twenty-twenty-nine. I don't know that there's really any, since it's private development, there's no real way for us to directly incentivize it. But we can discuss it with companies that may be interested in coming in to do a senior care facility and make things a little easier on the legislative side. But other than that, we don't really have any, you know, we don't run senior care facilities as a government, so a company would have to show interest first. But it is a problem, so I'm not taking it off. Support countywide effort to accommodate homeless persons and help them become self-sufficient. I didn't know where this came from.
I think I know where it came from.
I don't know if this was a Robertson Company addition.
I think I know where it came from.
Because we don't have a lot of-
Remember the facility they were going to build out in my district for single mothers?
That was for like endangered-
It was for female, and so I'm seeing that that's in parentheses, so I'm wondering if that's how that got there to begin with, and then it just grouped in with, I, I wasn't here, I don't think, when that was put together, so that's not, but I'm thinking that's where it came from, was that issue.
Well, I'm not sure how big of an issue homelessness is in Edgefield County. But I do feel like if we're going to leave an element like this on our plan, um, accommodate how would be my question. Because it's taxpayer money, so it needs to be a little more specific than accommodate. I mean, are we talking, if we find a homeless person, we put them in a hotel? Are we talking about building a homeless shelter, are we talking about starting a soup line? I mean, I'm just saying, right now, it just says accommodate, which doesn't actually specify any way that you're addressing the issue. And like I said, I'm not sure that's really a necessary item because I don't really see homelessness as a major issue in the county. We may have a couple, but I don't think we have very many.
I think it's being well managed, managed, I don't know if that's the right word, but well attended to maybe is a better word, by, um, like the feeding needy group and by the different churches who are doing outreach. I mean, we're still a small enough community that we are seeing the church involvement there. The aspect and the, and the, like, the feeding needy group.
And to be fair, if county council decided to try to help address an issue or a specific issue with public funds that was for an obvious charity like Feed the Needy or Edgefield County Churches Helping Others or something like that, I don't think you would run into a legal issue with the comp plan to provide that assistance. So, I, I, I don't think that'd be a very big controversial item, I guess is what I'm saying. So I'm ha- I'm happy to remove it, but if you want to leave it, I'm just saying we might need to put some specificity in there. Update countywide zoning subdivision regulations, that's a, that's a thing that we do every review and update of the comp plan. So, again, I just changed the date. Identify management plan for land uses along US Highway twenty-five, industrial park in Edgefield to maintain accessibility and travel flow. Again, not much we really have to do there, DOT takes care of US Highway twenty-five. Um, the road is rated for way more than it gets used right now. Um, so there's no need for expansion there or anything of that nature. So again, just updated the, the numbers on it. Identify management plan for land uses and development along Sweetwater Road to maintain its unique rural character. Again, we're expanding the overlays a little bit, but that changes year to year, so I just changed the date on it. Identify place making strategies to support vibrant focal points in the county and support existing town centers. I removed that. Um, we, we offered part of our ARPA funds to help the cities pay for their major projects to redo their signage in, in the squares and the streets, and put up new signs and all sorts of other little projects. Think that met the goal, the goal was to help revitalize them. We did dedicate a significant portion of our ARPA funds to that. Develop plan options for higher density housing options at the edges of the towns to support pedestrian-oriented access to services. Identify regulations to encourage sidewalk bike lanes, traffic enhancements. I put this to twenty-twenty-nine. Um, you'll see in just a minute, you know, with the, with the, uh, future land use map, some of that is being addressed in the future land use map. And after the comp plan, you'll see some other changes coming. So I just deleted the dates on the two at the bottom, Martin Town Road from I-twenty to B-four lane. I know that's a long-term plan of SC DOT. But to put a date on it, I don't think that's, any reasonable person would do that because DOT has no idea when they're doing it, we're not going to be able to guess. It's still on their long-term plan, and that was from five years ago. So, it, it hasn't hit their short term, and it might not for another decade. So, I, I know that it is one of the things that they're looking at, but there's no reason to put a date on it, so I just removed them. Same thing with road safety improvement. They have their plans, they've been putting guardrails in and changing things, but again, there's no real reason to put dates on that. And then the future land use map. So, this is where you'll see a good bit of the changes that we made for to the map. Most of the text changes are pretty simple. You can't really see my pointer that well, but this yellow right here, this is the estate residential section. It's this. Estate residential, uh, is what will allow for RA zoning. So, we don't need to do any sort of actually writing any land development laws unless it's allowed by this comp plan. So this is just expanding the estate residential future land use category across the Merriweather area. The Planning Commission had numerous meetings on this. It went to them for half a year. And this was the main topic, the main issue, was this estate residential. Uh, it started with a smaller area, and then the public came in, discussions were had, it grew a little bigger. And now it basically reaches all the way up Ransford, up to Ransford Road and all the way across to, uh, Garrett Road and then up Garrett Road all the way to twenty-three. So it's pretty expansive. Estate residential is the, basically, uh, large lot recommended low-density area. So, no high-density housing, basically, is, is what estate residential's for. Estate residential is very appropriate for the area. I'm not going to disagree with that at all because there is no water and sewer in the estate residential area except for right there at Mount Vantage. Mount Vantage is the only thing in that entire yellow area that has water and sewer, and I think all of you will agree that Mount Vantage is what it is and is not going to change. So, it is estate residential. Mount Vantage pretty much defines estate residential. Uh, I don't, I don't have any issue with that expansion of estate residential. Now, you will notice that down here at the bottom, where, uh, Luck Company per, well, is purchasing a piece of land, it won't be the entire seventeen-hundred acres. I left that white, that won't stay that way. When they actually get approved or denied, whatever happens to them finally, then whatever portion they cut out will be changed to something appropriate for them, and then the remainder of it will be a, a state residential. Then, the other change is right around Edgefield, you'll see that it's gone orange. That is one category denser than what was there previously. So again, in the chapter nine, there was a discussion of encouraging that around the towns. This is that. So this just does not mandate it, the zoning is not changing, y'all are not required to change the zoning. You do not have to legislate that in any way. It's just making it possible, if you want to change it in the future, you will be able to do so. And then, on Highway twenty-five, some of the smaller parcels were zon- were put on the future land use map as residential use only. That is a commercial corridor, so I changed it to a category that allows for residential or commercial use. Only the small lots. The reason I did not change some of the larger lots is because of density requirements on the different categories. I didn't want to encourage that on the larger lots. Most of that that's in between where our industrial park is south is a lot of ag land there. But there are a few smaller lots that are right along the Highway twenty-five corridor that I don't feel like we should be denying commercial if somebody purchases and that's what they wanted to do. So this basically just allows it, and we already have it zoned commercial, so it cleans it up and makes it match with our zoning. And that's it. So now we can discuss.
I would start, ask a couple of questions, Doc, first. Because the zoning, I'm not, not, well, yeah, the, the zoning potentially could change with the land use around the towns, at least the two towns. I don't think there's anything around Trenton that's changing.
Yes, we have not changed anything around.
But the other two towns would. Have you discussed that with the two mayors? I know it's not inside the towns, but it does impact the town.
So I did have a discussion with the mayor of Edgefield, Ken. And one of the reasons that they annexed the subdivision that's, that's going in right now is because our land use categories and zonings were far too restrictive to get what they needed built there built. So they annexed into the town, which of course towns look at housing and density completely opposite the way a county does. Counties don't care if you put in a lot of infrastructure and you have big lots and you have low-density areas. That's fine in a county. But in a city, that's considered a bad thing. They want to concentrate the housing as much as possible to save room for industry, commercial, and lower the need for any sort of public infrastructure, which of course is a huge expense, as y'all know, roads. You know, we get 1.3 million dollars a year for roads, and we can spend that in a single meeting and get maybe half of a road done. I mean, that's how expensive roads are. So y'all are aware where that trying to maintain roads is very expensive, and cities have a lot more of that than counties do. So their goal, of course, is to concentrate housing into a smaller area, whereas counties don't really have that goal. So like I said, the change on the comp plan, it does not directly affect anything that is currently in place. But if Ken were to come to you and say, hey, I need to encourage or allow a higher density right here on the edge of town, because I don't have a connecting property or something like that, this change would allow you to consider the matter. Whereas without the change, you would have to first consider changing the comp plan, and then you would have to consider changing the zoning map. You can leave it like it is indefinitely, and if no issue ever arises, it changes nothing. Comp plan's not regulatory in any way. It just makes recommendations. So I have not spoken at length with the towns. But I do know that it is a concern that they've had, and this will allow you to adjust it or change it in the future, if you felt the need to do so.
All right, and then, um, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page on something else. So I know state law requires us sometimes on some issues that the PC, the planning commission sends us, that if we want to make changes, we have to send it back to them. This particular document, if we want to make changes at the resolution time or we have a vote and all those things, we can make that change without sending it back to the planning commission. Is that correct?
That is correct. Again, this is a recommendatory document, not a regulatory document. So you can make changes. Generally speaking, the comp plan is the planning commission's document. It's their primary job, as it were. So if you make sweeping changes as a politeness factor, it should go back. But simple changes, especially if you make changes or recommendations in chapter nine, no, there's no reason to send that back. They don't really handle the expenditures of public funds, so chapter nine is more in your wheelhouse. If you were to make sweeping changes to chapter seven, then I would recommend you send it back to planning commission, simply because that is directly their wheelhouse, as it were, and it would just be polite. But there's no legal requirement for you to do so, since this is not a regulatory document.
Questions from council?
Highway 25 is a commercial corridor, correct?
So it's a mixed corridor. There are residences on the Highway 25 corridor. There's also agricultural property along 25 corridor, as I'm, I mean, I'm sure you're aware of that.
Correct.
We also have industrial on the Highway 25 corridor. Our industrial park is there. But primarily, yes, it's a commercial and residential mixed corridor.
Are we hurting industries by having a residential part of it?
So we kind of addressed that the last time by changing the land use map and some of the zoning around the actual industrial park to create a buffer. No, you don't want residences directly next to an industrial park, because if you've got some sort of very loud industry or, uh, you know, industry that produces fumes, well, the industry's not going to want to locate there if there are houses nearby, because they know it'll be a constant complaint. So yes, having houses right next to industry can be detrimental to industry. But we address that by creating a buffer zone around our industrial park. Generally speaking, what you want to see is industry, commercial, residential, agriculture. Kind of wanted to step that way. At this point, trying to change Highway 25 to be commercial only on the road frontage, with, some of those families have been there for a very long time. They're not going anywhere. Of course, none of this is retroactive, so it's not like if you changed it, you know, we're going to go put a boot to them and kick them out. It's not some sort of retroactive change or anything like that. If you wanted it to move in that direction to where it's a solid commercial corridor, you can do that, but you will get calls. There are families that have lived there for a very long time and would have no intention of ever leaving. They'll probably pass it down to their kids. It probably was passed down to them. I don't personally say I have an issue with that. I, it being mixed, as long as we maintain a comfortable buffer around the industrial park so that we don't actually damage it, I think we're fine.
Doc, I think we talked about that windback, you know, about, um, the families don't want to make a change in some areas. And, um, I'm kind of agree with you. I don't, I don't have a problem with it, you know, unless it get too far out of hand, you know?
Right, and we kind of addressed it in 2020.
Right, right.
After that comp plan update in 2019, when we brought the land development regulations in. We do have buffer requirements for commercial that locates next to residential. So there will, there will always be something in between.
Right.
You will, you'll never have a loud engine, let trucks stop building next to a house. Well, he's going to have to put in a 50-foot buffer that's planted and basically makes it invisible from the residents. That won't, of course, stop all complaints, but it goes a long ways to it. Will it become a major commercial corridor in the future? It'll certainly see some growth. Whether it will turn into a major thing or not will depend on if we get population growth.
Are there comments or questions from council? Okay. Hearing none, then let me ask a, a couple of final things. Uh, and I, the administrator and I have not talked about this, but so let me talk to you about it now in this more informal session. So I, I was thinking that from a public comment, public hearing point of view, if in November, at the November meeting, we had a public hearing on this, that would give everybody from the middle of September till November and then late, even longer. And then depending on the public input, maybe we take it up in December, at the December meeting for our resolution.
That makes good sense to me.
And then if we get swamped with comments and changes, that doesn't mean we have to do December. We can do it in January or February, because there is no timeline. But if everybody's happy or reasonably happy, you know, I, it seemed like to me we could do a December vote, and that's not hurrying this process along at all.
Okay, so public hearing November.
Public hearing November.
Okay.
And nothing on the October agenda then for this. Right, no, that's right.
I mean.
On the October agenda, I was thinking that maybe Doc could give a very, a shortened presentation so that at a regular meeting, everybody could hear a shortened presentation of what we just heard. So it'll be three times, it'll be, well, four times. People heard it tonight, if they watch YouTube and all that. They'll hear it at our October meeting in a brief presentation. No vote then. November, we have the public hearing, no vote then. December, we vote.
So it's, it's kind of like we're doing the three ordinance thing, but we're not.
Right.
Yeah, but we're giving the, the same amount of time. Yeah, I like that.
Everybody's happy with that?
I have no problem with it.
Okay. All right, then the other thing I was going to suggest to you, Doc, was can you put your PowerPoint presentation on the website also, so that people can see the background?
Yeah.
Particularly the first, I mean, the whole thing, but the first half might mean something to some people who aren't familiar with, um, the comp plan. And also, I would ask you if you could send it to all five of us on email, if you would, so we can specifically have it.
Not a problem.
Okay, I'll ask then one more time. Anything else from council? And then if not, anything from the administrator or the attorney we need to know?
No.
Doc, last chance, anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Counsel, I think we've discussed it then. Uh, there's nothing else to discuss. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
And Mr. Moody makes the motion, sir second.
Second.
And Mr. Talbot, second. Send a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank y'all. And keep your notebooks. Take your notebooks back home with you.